Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Kent City Council Committee of the Whole meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 24th, 2021. And just a reminder, a little bittersweet, this is our last Committee of the Whole meeting in this format. Some time ago, council elected to go back to the individual committee format. So with that, the Parks and Human Services Committee will meet the first Thursday of every month at 4:00 p.m., starting in September, but actually, we're going to hold our first meeting in October. Public Works will meet the first and third Monday of every month at 4:00 p.m. And Economic and Community Development will meet the second Monday of the month at 4:00 p.m. And we will meet as a council for public safety and our operations committee. That will be the first and third Tuesdays before the workshops. So those will start at 4:00 p.m., followed by workshop and then our council meetings. So all of that information will also be on the website. Moving on to our agenda today, we have quite a long agenda, and we will get started with rule call.
Thank you, Council President. Council President Troutner?
Here.
Councilmember Boyce?
Yeah.
Councilmember Fincher?
Yes.
Councilmember Core?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Michaud?
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Any changes to the agenda from councilor staff? All right, seeing none, we will move on to presentations. The first item we have is payment of bills. That comes to council members through email, so we will move that on to the consent calendar. And next up, we have an authorization for the use of Accesso Show or Center operating fund balance for capital repair and replacement. This requires action by council. I'd like to welcome Paula Painter and Tim Higgins.
Great, thank you very much, Council President Troutner, members of city council. So back in February of this year, I came to Committee of the Whole. We were looking to use $300,000 of the Show or Center operating fund fund balance. If you might recall, since the Show or Center has opened in 2009, that fund has collected from the general fund the admissions tax for both the Thunderbirds and the Show or Center. Over all of these years, it's accumulated to nearly $3 million in fund balance. Now, the $3 million in fund balance does comprise a little bit of the CARES funding, the $545,000 in reopening costs, which is included in that fund balance, leaving about $2.4 million. So knowing that we have this fund balance available, and we do have needs at the Show or Center, I did work with the general manager, Tim Higgins, to come up with a plan with what to do with those funds. And so what he's going to do tonight is walk through a five-year capital plan. This capital plan would be paid for by, first, the fund balance, the growth in fund balance, because we know it will continue to grow as admission tax continues to be put in there, in addition to the $300,000 that the Show or Center receives every year for capital expenses. The one piece that is not part of this five-year plan in front of you is the items that have already been approved for 2021. So with this request, we will be asking to budget the $338,925 in 2021. All of the other elements of this plan will come before you in our regular budget process, beginning with 2022's mid-biennium budget process, and then continuing on to each of the regular biennial budgets. So at this point, what I'd like to do is turn this over to Tim Higgins and have him present for you the five-year capital plan.
Council President, council members, I'm excited to be presenting to you today a plan for capital improvement projects at the Accesso Show or Center through 2025. This plan will be reviewed annually and adjusted accordingly based on our budget and needs. Kim, first slide, please. It's our new scoreboard. Well, it's not up yet, that's a rendering. So I'm just going to give you a quick shot of what we're looking at. That will be going up, planned on going up November 13th, the week of November 13th. Next slide, please. Back in February, you approved, council approved, $300,000 for the $800,000 project, with SMG contributing the other $500,000 for the scoreboard. At that time, councilmember Boyce asked me if the $800,000 was enough. At that time, my answer was yes. Well, I was not mistakenly, did not include the tax on that $800,000. So as you can see, the project did come in at $786,000 when it went out to bid, with the additional need for tax at a cost of $865,000. When we got into it, it wasn't as easy as a plug-and-play and take the other scoreboard down. We realized we needed additional electrical service to add to that scoreboard for more power. That was a $64,000 addition. With that, we are asking for an additional fixed board. In the addition, in the original package of $786,000, there's a fixed board, scoreboard, probably five feet by eight feet, that's going to go up in the corner of the building that we would use for youth hockey games, for basketball games, so we didn't have to turn our big scoreboard on. Talking to other buildings that have done this, they wish they would have put two boards in, one in each corner of the building, so it's better visibility. Talked to Everett, Everett wished they would have put one in, so we're asking for an additional board. With that, you'll see throughout this presentation, I'm asking for a contingency of 5% for things that do come up, as we've seen in what's happening with the scoreboard. So with all that being said, we are requesting additional funding from the fund balance of $184,000 for the scoreboard project. Next slide, please. An arc flash test, it's come to our attention that this needs to be done every five years. This is on our switchgear, our electrical switchgear. This is required by NFPA code and OSHA, and will need to be done every five years. Next, please. Administration carpet. This project was approved for 2020. Funds were diverted to sustain venue operation through COVID shutdown. This is the second part of flooring and carpet install. We did complete the first part, which is the suites and Heritage Club. So if you've been in the building, you saw the new carpet, the new flooring in the suites and the Heritage Club. So yeah, this is our, the second part. Again, the funds were diverted for operations. Next slide, please. Transformer for show power. When the building was built, we have insufficient power to accommodate for most shows. We need to go out, most concerts and family shows require specific electrical power. For the venue to accommodate, we need to rent a transformer. The rental cost is approximately $2,000 per show. We estimate the payback on his purchase is approximately, approximately three years. So, next slide, please. Chain motors. Again, this, and I have a better picture further down in the deck, but the chain motors, we were asking to purchase seven chain motors. A motor move is required for most events in moving our backstage curtain, or our backstage curtain. To perform the motor move, we hire outside labor to install the rigging at an approximate cost of $2,000 per show. Our payback for this investment will be approximately two years. By installing these motors, we would be able to do this in-house with our staff, and we wouldn't have to hire outside companies to do this. Ice deck covering. Picture speaks a thousand words. This is the, covers our ice floor for presenting, other events, concerts, trade shows, graduations, banquets. This product, as you can see, is pretty beat up, just through the years of use, but this does need to be replaced, as it is now considered somewhat of a safety hazard, so. Concession stand rebrand. This was on the calendar and ready to happen in April of 2020. Again, funds were diverted to sustain building operation through the COVID shutdown. The rendering you see there is actually similar to the look that one of the concession stands we're going with. Marquee. Marquee was installed in 2010. The life cycle for this is around 10 years. What is happening is now is all the LED panels are starting to go out. The cost to replace those LED panels is about $1,700 for a little square panel. We are now buying them at $1,000 apiece, and we're installing them ourselves, but we're looking at probably eight to 10 a year right now that are going to be going out. So it's time for a new marquee. Basketball court. Basketball court is in need of refinishing and some repair. This should be done about every eight years, so we've stretched our longevity on getting this completed. New building for storage. And I show this picture where the trees are out back, there's an area of approximately 25 by 60 feet. We're looking to install a storage area. What is happening is, as we've grown over the years with events and increased food and beverage sales, we have outgrown our footprint for both equipment and needs to service our clients. In particular, when we have a concert, shows come in, there's no more room for their catering. Their tour with show catering, and that's a big deal for shows and having the building being able to supply that area. So we feel that in the future, this could be a detriment to our ability in getting shows. So we're looking to build out more storage, taking some of the stuff in the back-of-house area and put it into the storage area. We're just asking for a simple storage area, nothing conditioned, just a place to store some of the ice deck, some chairs, tables, et cetera. Gate and fence repair. This is the original gate. It is, over time, has gotten beat up due to snow, sleet, wind, rain. We're also looking to install an automatic opener that is controlled from the security office. This will help us to keep the gate closed, enhancing the building's security. Kitchen and concession equipment. This year, we're proposing over a four-year period of spending the $550,000. Ovens, stoves, dishwashers, smallwares, these are our original items and pass their life cycle. We assessed all equipment and believe we can stretch their use and begin purchasing in 2022 with an annual investment again in 2023, '24, and '25. No pun intended, but this is our bread and butter. F&amp;B is the majority of our revenue. Folding chairs. Again, this will be over a period of time, starting in 2022, replacing some of our folding chairs, as you see that are on the floor. We do know of approximately 200 at this time that we need to replace. We will assess annually that need, and we may be able to push it out further, but right now, we do know of 200, and we're anticipating that could be the case moving forward. So with that, we're looking at a total of $168,000 investment over through 2025. Television units. 13 years, we're starting to see some of the TVs in the suites are failing. We are taking from some areas and replacing these in the suites. Again, this will be, we can piecemeal this one, but I just want to get this on the record as this may need a full replacement in the next couple of years. So here's the stage curtain and blackout curtains. So going back to the chain motors, you can see where this curtain is, it's at a half-house configuration. That's where the chain motors would live up in the steel, and we could just work it from in-house and pull that up, instead of moving the chain motors from full house to half-house. These curtains were purchased and installed during the building opening in 2009. The vomitory curtains, as you see on top in section 107, these are professionally cleaned biannually, but due to wear and tear, all curtains will need to be replaced soon. That cost of $346,000, I took that from the original FFNE. We don't believe it's going to be that much. Again, when we go out to bid, that will probably come down. Ribbon boards in the building, these are, these are pretty cool. We are looking at this and how it will affect or can, we can gain additional advertising dollars. This is not really a good picture for that, because these would be on the, not just the two panels, but this would be on the end of the building, encompass the majority of each end of the building. Suite furniture. We're starting to see, of course, starting to see some wear and tear on the suite furniture. We do clean the suite furniture annually and when needed, but through wear and tear, the furniture will need to be replaced after a couple of more years of use. We're looking to start this in 2024, do half of the suites, we have 20 suites, do half in 2024, and the other half in 2025. Heat exchanger for the ice plant. The life cycle for this item is 20 to 25 years. Due to the initial installation issues with the refrigeration system, we now anticipate a shortened life cycle. This is what makes our ice for hockey, the plant. The original system lacked capacity to meet the demand needed for a properly functioning system. So what happened, and I think some of the council members been on the council at the time, the system was put in and it was not adequate. We did go looking for damages from the manufacturer. They did accommodate us. We went ahead and repaired the system, and we, but due to, you know, the problem over five, six years, we were monitoring it, but we may have a problem, and we just want to keep monitoring it. It may need to be replaced in the next five years, so. Next slide. Wi-Fi. We don't have a price on this, a cost for this. We're actually working with city IT right now. We have limited Wi-Fi in the arena. We are exploring increasing the bandwidth and expanded access throughout the entire arena, which is required for our new mobile ordering system platform. We're exploring all options and consulted with the city IT department. We believe by partnering with the communication company, AT&amp;T, Verizon, there may be no cost for this project, but it is a capital project, and we're looking at the entire, entire project to see if there is any cost. So, next slide. With all that being said, through the next five years, we have an anticipated cost of $2.9 million. So on the summary page, you can see that it's laid out annually and collectively. So with all that, any questions?
Thank you, Tim. A lot of great information. Questions from my colleagues. Councilmember Boyce.
Hey, thanks a lot. Just, I'm sorry. Yeah, the last slide with the Wi-Fi, I hope there could be a partnership we could get with one of the communication. I think that could be a big plus, and the cost may not be that bad, but you know, it could be a good advertise for them as well, too. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, it's, to me, it's like buying a house, right? You know, you can't expect not to have maintenance, especially with a building that size there, right? So I kind of like what we doing, and I'm okay with this. I looked at the presentation earlier, and I get it. I guess my only question, and Paula, you make answers. So do we have a maintenance budget, per se? And you might have said this, I didn't hear you, but would we put that some of our dollars, percentage or whatever, whatever, in the maintenance budget to try to kind of handle some of these issues that's going to come up, because we know there's going to be maintenance every year, no matter what?
That is a very great question. From the time the Show or Center has been open, we have allotted $300,000 a year for maintenance, and that has been the limit of that, for that facility, which is why this use of fund balance seems to be a great opportunity to get some of these other projects done.
So that's the $300,000 coming from?
The general fund.
Oh, okay, and that's it? There's no other?
That's correct.
Okay, I thought there was other besides that.
No.
So are there in the plan going forward? Because $300,000 is probably not going to take care of our issue going forward? So maybe there's something, don't need to ask today, but something we probably need to talk about if we really going to invest into this building, which is for the city, right? For our community, we need to make sure that we can have a bucket where we can start putting maintenance in, because we know maintenance is going to happen.
Absolutely. We'll put that on the agenda of things to be chatting about for looking towards the future.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah, great comments and
Thank you, Tim.
And concerns about that. I like to see, too, you have some things built in there that will actually pay for themselves over time, and I like the idea of those, I don't remember what you call them, but I know exactly where they are, where they have, kind of above the suites, where they say sponsorship, the ability to be able to change those with new technology and be able to draw more revenue, I think is a great idea as well. So, great job. Councilmember Larmour.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Boyce. You know, this is taking care of a, just taking care of a home. You know, it takes maintenance. Sometimes it's more than you wish, but you know, you don't do it, you're in even worse shape. So I don't have a problem with what I've seen. Just a couple of questions. On the transformer, I just, we went by the slide kind of quickly, and I wanted to go back. There was something said about renting it, but we're not proposing to rent it, we're proposing to purchase them, so we don't have to rent anymore.
Yes, yes, we are. So the payback in three years, the shows, purchase of about $50,000.
Okay, gotcha. Just want to clarify on that. And then, just curious, what is the lifespan of the ice cover?
12 to 15 years.
15 years on that, okay. And then, do you have any idea, have you have any projections from other venues on those ribbon advertised ads, how much we think we might be able to increase revenue?
Every market's different. I kind of want to just, I think it'd be fair just to analyze our market. So yeah, so we're working through that, and I can get back to you with that number. We're going to see if, is it worth the investment of the $200,000?
Okay, great, thank you. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Tim, on, as far as the things that need to be fixed, I'm sure you had a list of things that were going down. Are there other pieces of equipment, for instance, that you may need to replace that you would give us on the next round? Is this what you see for the next few years?
So in 21, in 2021 and 2022, I feel confident we need to be there at those numbers. Everything else, we're going to look at, and maybe we can push some things out, but historically, it could be there. Now, aside from any surprises, you know, does a hot water tank go down for $100,000? We don't anticipate that, but that could happen. If that happens, Paul and I will be talking, and how do we, how do we adjust?
Again, just like a house, I understand that part. And then, the other question was, I saw the contingency fees, are these all the numbers you gave us? Are they inclusive of tax or not?
Tax, all inclusive of tax, yes.
Thank you.
Made that mistake once, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyce.
One follow-up question. So is the ICE Center, that's different than the Show or, that belong to the city and other? I didn't see any maintenance reference to the ICE Center. I know you guys practice there, right?
Yeah, the ICE Center, Kent Valley ICE Center?
Yeah.
That is owned by Lexie Donner.
Okay.
And my understanding, there's a lease agreement with the city for leasing of the land.
So we don't
We don't have any, no, we don't have
You don't. Well, Paula, do we have any, okay, it's all, okay. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments? All right, so we have this motion before us. Is everyone okay moving this forward to consent?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Tim. Good to see you.
Thank you, you're in time.
All right, moving on in our presentations. Up next, we have information only, and it's the Flex Fund ARPA request. So I'd like to start off by welcoming Bill Ellis.
Hi, good afternoon, council members. A couple months ago, you might recall, during my Economic Community Development update, I presented on the Flex Fund as an indicated potential investment that I would recommend the city look at for the American Recovery Act dollars. We've been looking at that more deeply, we've been scrutinizing it. There's some details into the FAQs from Treasury that we want to work out, figure out what would be the best recommendation. So it's information only today, but my guest, my guest is the coordinator of the Flex Fund, is Chuck DePew. Chuck DePew is the Senior Director for the National Development Council, a national nonprofit Chuck DePue is a senior director for the National Development Council, a national nonprofit that provides economic community development assistance to local governments. For more than 30 years, NDC has worked with local jurisdictions on housing and economic development efforts. Chuck provides technical assistance and project finance, development negotiation, and housing finance to communities throughout the Northwest, including Utah and Wyoming and Northern California. In addition, he teaches commercial and housing real estate finance nationwide in NDC's leading training program. Prior to his tenure at NDC, Chuck was deputy director of the Office of Economic Development for the City of Seattle. He has over 30 years of experience in public housing, public finance, housing, economic and community development. Yields a master's, a bachelor's degree in environmental planning from University of California, Southern Cruz, and a master's degree in urban planning from the University of Washington. So, my privilege to introduce Chuck DePue to go through some information about the Flex Fund and then we can both answer questions about a potential contribution from the city to this fund.
Thank you, Bill. It's always interesting hearing my, my degrees. I wander around in the finance world all the time and I don't have a finance background. I'm a plant, reform planner. Probably all planners are reformed at some point. But I want to talk to you about the Flex Fund, as Bill has talked about, we've been in conversations for a long time. We started working on this last summer in the midst of the PPP program, trying to figure out how do we get capital to small businesses for recovery. Unfortunately, we're still in that recovery, so we're not sure when we're going to get to normal. And we started to think about the fact that we needed to get beyond small grants. We needed to get to size of capitals that could be more meaningful for businesses, which meant we needed to find a different way of organizing capital and we needed to find a source of capital where we can provide more dollars to businesses. So, we've now opened, we've got a public-private effort here with the state of Washington as an initial contributor. We got, we've got some bank funding that's getting ready to close and we now have started to get some numbers for you. This is just, again, these are just early slides pointing out some of the problems. This is not a surprise to anybody that's been around in terms of the challenges our businesses have had. One of the key things for us is this, that bottom number in 2020. In 2019, Washington created over 63,000 net new jobs and in 2020, that figure was just 37,000, a 40% decline. That number is still declining as we're adjusting with new labor force preferences in the marketplace. So, we're still having a slow recovery for businesses and most of that, that impact on businesses really helped our, our BIPOC populations in a very significant way. In DC, we do small business lending in communities. We are a CDFI. We did a lot of PPP lending using the federal program. Most of our lending was to minority business owners that really were excluded from a lot of the major marketplaces for accessing PPP dollars. So, again, it's not surprising we've had an economic withdrawal and we've had an even more, an even bigger impact within our minority-owned business community. So, what we're trying to do is actually to try and move out of stabilization to recovery. So, we've had PPP forgivable grants. Idle is an SBA loan program. It's a long-term program, low cost, kind of complicated, hard for business to access. We're moving into a recovery period which, which has less restrictions on how dollars are sized. So, we're looking at financing that's based on about three to six months of business revenue. We're not worried about what they spent money on, what they lost money on. We just want to make it simple in terms of the sizing of the loan. We're focused on flexible working capital, so it's the operations of the business, not fixed asset. That makes it easier for us as lenders. We're utilizing outreach through community-based networks, so we have a cadre of CDFI partners, community development, financial institutions. These are mission-based lenders in Washington State and we have a handful of technical assistance providers that are also assisting us with businesses for pre-application and then businesses that aren't able to get a loan, to work with that business on what those requirements are to then bring them back into the portal and get a loan. And all of our CDFIs are nonprofits at this point. There are credit unions that we're starting to talk to, but they're all Washington-based, which is different than some other national funds. This is really a picture of what we're trying to do. We're trying to be very efficient organizing capital. So, banks, we've got bank lending that we're working with. We're talking to foundations, corporations, government agencies like the City of Kent. The fund itself is made up of an online portal managed by CRF out of, out of Minneapolis. NDC is the manager of that fund and Calvert Impact Capital is our partner raising capital around the country for the fund. So, we're organizing the capital sources, the kind of regulations, the management of this fund. We're distributing dollars to, again, the CDFI partners, they're making loans to, to different businesses around the state and then we're then buying those loans from them. So, we're providing liquidity to CDFIs by purchasing loans, allowing them to then relend those dollars. But under our program right now, we're focused on businesses under 3 million in annual revenue, less than 50 employees. That represents about 96% of Washington businesses. The, the average business that we've been lending to in the fund so far has revenues under $1 million. So, we're actually getting to a smaller business than at least what the program is targeted to. If you don't know who's CDFIs are, that's not uncommon. A lot of people don't quite understand the Community Development Financial Institution Network. So, a little bit of history here. For the most part, they are, they are predominantly nonprofits who are mission-driven in terms of lending activities. The, the key thing to recognize with CDFIs is they're chartered by the U.S. Treasury. 60% of a CDFI's loan volume and their lending activities, so number of loans and loan volume, have to fit a low-income criteria, either a low-income census tract or it has to be a minority business owner. So, the certification requires them to be doing lending in communities that really aren't accessing bank financing and they're, they tend to be very flexible around different kinds of things. We'll see, for instance, Craft 3 is one of our CDFIs that does a lot of lending in septic tank, environmental restoration projects, Business Impact Northwest, you probably know from the local area, as well as Evergreen. So, they all kind of have different niches. Generally, they have traditionally been more expensive because of the way their cost of capital is, but the key thing is their mission is to work in communities that really need that help because they're not accessing mainstream finance. These are the five lenders we have so far. NDC's lending entity, again, Business Impact Northwest. Evergreen is the, is the, an SBA 504 entity in Washington State, but they do some other lending. Craft 3. And Ascendus is actually a microcredit lender that's actually based in, they're in New York. They were part of the old Accion network that, that separated a bit because they wanted to be more on the fintech side. So, Ascendus is the nonprofit, the executive director of Ascendus is a Husky grad. So, we kind of gave him local rights to let him do work in Washington State, but they kind of cover the microcredit work for us. These are the loan terms. So, starting up for the first six months until the end of the year 2021, businesses can ask for a 72-month term at four and a half percent fixed interest or it'll then, after that period of time, it will be offering five-year loans at 4%. The first 12 months are interest only, so the balance of the loan is paid afterwards. So, again, we're trying to provide a little bit more money on favorable terms, give them a little bit more of a runway as we figure out where this economy is going. Again, use of proceeds for working capital, which covers everything other than fixed asset financing. Key thing from the lender world is we want to be straightforward in lending, so we don't want to have to worry about the value of the asset where we have to worry about collateral. That tends to be where we slow down on the lending side. On the, on the guarantee side, there's no collateral required, but we do require a guarantee of the owner. So, we are looking for the owner to stand behind them, know their loan. There's no upfront fees and again, we're looking at the lesser of $150,000 or six months of revenue. So, again, we don't care with what, what's happened, what, what bills you're trying to pay, $150,000 or six months. And this compares to that idle program I referenced, SBA's kind of favorable long-term financing program. And this was as of July, where the average idle loan was about $60,000. So, businesses are accessing a lower amount of capital. Again, the Flex Fund is trying to get to a higher level of capital that that business can afford. This is our platform, so it's online portal. The one, the one kind of nice thing about opening this at this time is almost all of our businesses are fairly, pretty experienced with online portals now because of all the grant systems they've been through for the last year and a half. So, this is our Flex Fund application system. They go in. The nice thing about this is that what we've done, at least in terms of translation services, is you can click there on that button that says English and we've got seven different languages there that someone can click on and it'll actually will then change the landing page into that language. So, we're trying to provide a little bit more accessibility in terms of language access. The platform is really there to try and pre-qualify borrowers. So, the idea is we ask a number of simple questions, don't require any paperwork. Businesses can access via, via their phone and it's pre-qualifying under certain, certain criteria that they fill out. And then, when they get to the end of that, they're then matched with borrowers. So, we have five CDFIs. Every CDFI has the same product, six-year loan at four and a half percent. So, there's no competition based on the loan product because everyone is the same, but each CDFI has slightly different criteria and preferences. So, the business is matched with those CDFIs. So, then they choose who they want to try and work with. They click that button, then that CDFI picks that up and then calls them and they start the loan origination process at that point. So, the key thing with the Flex Fund has been very intentionally driven by the business perspective, the cost of funds, that's well below what CDFIs lend because we want to try and help that business out. And again, the business is the one that's picking their partner. It's not us choosing who they go match with. This is where we're currently at. We opened on July 30th. We have $150 million of matched requests in the, in the pool. Now, the matched request is not necessarily the same as what they'll actually qualify for as a loan. Right now, we're matching, 62% of our applications are matching to borrowers, so we're staying attentive to that because we want to make sure that there is no systemic reason why businesses aren't being matched. Most of the applications that don't get matched is usually someone who's from out-of-state. You have to be in Washington State, obviously. They've asked for too much money or frankly, their, you know, their, their criteria, typically a credit score, is just too low for them to find a lender. And so far, our, our CDFIs, it's taken them a while to kind of deal with the volume of this loan, the 1,500 applications. For CDFIs that maybe we'll see six applications a month. So, they're digesting this volume of applications they're getting. So, we're starting to get our lending up to speed. We're at 3.2 million as of last week. We expect to be a little bit above six by the end of this week. So, now, all of, all four of our five lenders are now making loans and it's starting to kind of pick up as they figure out kind of how this process. This is, this is some numbers that we ran the, based on that. So, in Washington State, we've got 150 million and just to show Kent here. So, for Kent right now, in our portal, we've got $4.5 million of requests. And then you can see the distribution of other cities. So, with us, without us really being intentional yet, we've already got 42 applications asking for $4.5 million of capital. I don't know where we are on the loan side. At some point, we'll be able to provide those, those metrics kind of in real time for you guys and for Bill, but I did want you to kind of see where you're at. And one of the things that we've been really pleased with, because again, we're trying to make sure we can help businesses that don't have access to traditional capital. So, you can see at least the demographics of the, of the matched applicants we have. A significant number of those are women and minority-owned businesses, you know, which again, traditionally is a system, you know, a business owner that's been excluded from traditional capital systems. And this is still using electronic portal for applications. So, I think people were worried that we would, we would need to go through other technical assistance requirements to try and access that population. And again, I, for, for my sense, because of all of the grants we've been going through over the last year and a half, businesses have become very adept at electronic systems. So, so far, we're finding a pretty good sense of volume as well as the demographics of our borrowers. The Washington Flex Fund is the fourth of these funds that have been established. The first one was a small one in the city of Chicago as a pilot. New York Forward was created right at the height of the COVID pandemic. California Rebuilding was launched after that and then the Southeast United States have launched a fund called SOAR and Washington is the fourth. And so far, compared to those others, we're, we're much further ahead in terms of the application matching. The key is going to be obviously us getting loans out the door because that's what this is all about. We've also, as I said, we've organized a series of technical assistance providers. We didn't want to worry about the whole marketplace of providers and we wanted to have some, some TA providers that were specific to helping our businesses be successful applicants. And then, if we can't find or provide a loan for some specific reason, then we're partnering that business with a TA provider to solve that problem. And if they can solve it, bring them right back in line. They don't lose the place where they were before, so they don't start all over again. So, we have the TA providers underneath Business Impact Northwest. SNAP Financial is over in Spokane. Ventures obviously is local. 501 Commons does a lot of TA for nonprofits. Nonprofits are also eligible as borrowers. Sister Sky does a lot of advising in the, in the native business community. And Center for Inclusive Entrepreneurship does some work. They originated out of the Highland Program, but now they're really based up at Skagit and Clough County. So, we've been talking with Bill and others at Kent, looking at, at allowing you to utilize this process, kind of partner with the fund as a scalable business loan fund in the sense the hard work has been done. We've already got this up and running, raising capital. And where we've seen jurisdictions really kind of get involved in this, and this is the example down in California, where Santa Clara County, the southern end of the Bay Area, they would never say that the southern end of the Bay Area, but they wanted to make sure that they got kind of their fair share in the California rebuilding fund. So, they actually provide a loan. In this case, it was $6 million they provided to the fund to just try and make sure they had a seat at the table. And at the end of the day, what, what ended up happening because of this intentionality is while their population would have kind of warranted about four and a half percent of the fund, they actually got about 13% of the dollars. And again, that's, that's not, that's, I mean, that's not, you know, rigged or anything. It's just being intentional, attracting your business into the fund, being attentive that way, you know, provides a little bit more opportunity for them. And then, in the case, we're working through some of the murkiness of ARPA language. The idea here is at least the, the public funds are subordinate to our senior funds, so because of that, I can leverage your dollars. So, I can, I can provide $2 for every one of your dollars. And then, at the end of the program, remember, this is a one-time program, we're not revolving funds right now. We will set up a revolving fund soon with state resources through SSBCI. But this program doesn't revolve, so once it's done, we pay off our senior lenders, whatever is remaining, you get your money back minus the sense of losses. Of course, you never got any losses in Kent. That never happens. And then, and then a return on your dollars as well because we're, we're paying 3%. So, the idea is you can use it once. We get through this program, we help businesses and then you can have a second chance to repurpose that money, either for continued economic development lending or whatever is important to the City of Kent at that time. And that's what we're trying, what we're trying to work out, some of the vague language of ARPA. And that's the last of it, what we're trying to do. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. Remember, I'm a planner in a finance world, so I can give you a complicated answer or a simple answer depending on what your preferences are.
Wonderful presentation. Thank you so much for joining us today. I'm going to start with Councilmember Boyce.
Hey, what a great program. I really like the opportunities given, you know, different communities to be able to apply for, for reasonable rate. I also, I mean, Bill, as I said, we got 42 companies roughly that already, the city of Kent already apply. It'd be nice to kind of, just when you apply, that may not mean you're going to get it, right? I'm guessing, right? So, I mean, it's nice to see as we go through this process, is kind of keep track of the metrics as it goes up, how many people actually are being able to work their way through the process. Have we seen these things come before? It is almost hard to get through the system, right? So, I'd just like to be for us to be able to just kind of track it and see how the progress being made. But really, I am, this is a good program. My other question I have, so there's quite a few companies in the city already managed to find out about this, there's 42, but what about the other one? How are we going to go about making sure the other business in Kent understand this program is out here?
Yeah, you know, we've been, you may have seen Craft 3's name up there earlier, who we worked with on the emergency grant program last year. Michelle and I have been in touch with a wide group, wide assortment of groups based in Kent who have connections into the local business community and we would want to continue to invest in that. And I think that's one of the things I've also talked about last time I was here at council, was talking about investing in a community partner network. In fact, the City of Kent, with One Redmond submitted a federal grant request as SBA, Small Business Administration, for two and a half million dollars in King County to help Small Business Administration, for $2.5 million in King County to help pay for technical assistance, basically do outreach, referral, onboarding, helping people know about the program. Continuing to talk to the Seattle Chamber and the Port of Seattle about going to many cities and not just Kent, but all the cities to make sure that we're investing in those types of resources to complement the Flex Fund request. So we're thinking about that intentionally. And, you know, just in the few weeks, it's impressive the amount of dollars. I think Chuck has talked about giving us regular metric, giving us regular updates. We can track the funds that the city of Kent could contribute to this fund just for Kent and make sure that Kent dollars are for Kent businesses and thereby increase the amount of businesses that could sign up for this program in Kent. And then funding could return to us to maybe start to set up a revolving loan fund in the future, which is a very strategic, once-in-a-generation opportunity to create dedicated resources for our small businesses going forward. Those things are, I think, were most attractive.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I think that, once again, awareness is key, right? So what are we going to do to continue to promote? And some of our businesses are just so busy, you know, trying to survive and not bringing their head up, right? So we want to make sure that there's some programs out there that can help them, you know, in a time of need and kind of during this COVID going on.
And I was going to add to Bill, one of the things we've done with the Flex Fund that the other funds didn't really do is we've hired a communications firm. They're based out of Spokane. So we have a strategy, and we knew that we would get a bump at opening. The announcement, everybody's exciting, it's the new toy. And then the real marketing happens now. So we have a consultant on board, so you know what works best in Kent. They're the ones that can write the materials, provide those narratives and materials and stuff for you. So that collaboration is going to be essential to getting to those other businesses out there that haven't found us yet.
Great news. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. I'm very excited about this program as well. And most of my questions have been asked already, but one of the other ones is, I'd be interested in knowing about the businesses that are applying, how their, I guess, if we're able to, their experience with this. And maybe having them share the story and getting other businesses involved. So it's just kind of something I was thinking about, like, you know, 42 businesses already applying for this, pretty amazing. So, you know, just keeping it, you know, going and getting our more BIPOC businesses and our small businesses, the funding and the support system they need. So I think, I think you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you. So you mentioned that there's assistance available if somebody, if one of the businesses or organizations, because it's open to nonprofits too, right? You said. So if they are not one of the ones who receives a loan, there's assistance or there's a session to sit down with them and walk them through what, why they didn't get it. So to explain it to them so that hopefully the next time they would write a better application if that was the issue, or so that they know why they didn't get it. So what percentage of the applicants actually take advantage of that once everything is said and done? Do you happen to know?
I don't, to be honest with you, I don't have that metric yet because the technical assistance is just getting kind of engaged with our process. So the idea, so what happens on the fund is if a business doesn't get a loan and they get a notice from the CDFI, and the CDFI will provide them a verbal explanation of this is kind of the whys, again, still protecting, you know, financial privacy, then they'll be directed to a TA provider. So Business Impact Northwest has kind of a triage function where they meet with the business, they meet with the CDFI to find out what's the need here. And then they'll assign that business or they'll assign other TA providers for that specific thing. So it might be your financials didn't really project what we need to see, or we need more of that. So it's specific things we're trying to solve for and not just a generic, we can't make a loan TA. Because we want to solve these specific problems, get them fixed, and then bring them back in for that loan decision. And once they're fixed, then they should then be going to a loan decision. But we don't have the metrics on how many people are using it yet right now.
And what are the seven languages that you're able to select in that portal?
I knew someone was going to ask me that. And all I can say is it's the seven most spoken foreign languages in Washington State.
Okay. And would you mind getting that information to Bill? And Bill can get that to us. I'd like to see how it matches up with our languages here in Kent. Thank you.
I would also answer that, Councilmember Fincher, just saying that, referencing what I said earlier about the community partner network and having on-the-ground local partners who are versed in our 10 most spoken languages, which, you know, we did last time, we would do again, we're in communication with those partners. So I see it as built-in suspenders, not just relying upon the portal's ability to have the dropdown into English with the different languages, Spanish, Arabic, Punjabi, you know, all of the different languages. I think we are going to need to have other partners in the community engaged on this and have convenings around it. So we have our 10 most spoken languages we know, and we will continue to work with our local partners on that.
Good. Thank you.
Bill, what's next steps in this process? Will you bring in this back to Economic and Community Development Committee? What can be for council?
I would have, I think the next step would be to ask for authorization from council. I didn't feel comfortable bringing an action motion this evening because they're still in an interim final guidance, not the final, final guidance from Treasury. And depending on that, depends on how, whether or not I would recommend structuring a contribution as either a loan or a grant to the NDC Fund. And if it's a grant, it would be with certain stipulations potentially as to how that would revolve in the future versus if it's a loan. And there's some technical insights that we're trying to gain right now out of the federal government around some of their FAQ language, around the maturity of loans beyond 2026 and how to account for them. Until we have some of that accounting guidance, I couldn't say. But I think, Chuck, I'll turn it back to you. I think we were talking earlier about October as being sort of an important date or time in terms of our ability to buy B-level debt from the fund, so.
Yeah, because, yeah, the micro detail, which may or may not be important at this time, is I can provide a match to you so long as my state money doesn't run out. And I have $30 million of capital from the state. Our senior lending requires us to have some buffer. That's one of the reasons why they're giving us money at a low cost. So probably, I would say, that April 1st in that timeframe is where we would need the funds to be available to provide the match. Otherwise, we would just be providing direct tracing for you without, or trying to provide the match, but I couldn't guarantee a match at that time.
I also have an answer for you, Councilmember Fincher. Top seven languages are English, Chinese, Russian, Spanish, Vietnamese, Emmerich, Arabic, and Tagalog.
And could you repeat those first? I was expecting Michelle there.
Sure. Thanks to Michelle. English, Chinese, Russian, Spanish, Vietnamese, Emmerich, Arabic, and Tagalog. Yep. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Michelle. Anyone else have any questions or comments? All right. Thank you so much for joining us. Looking forward to getting more information as we move through this process.
Sure. Thank you.
All right. Next, I'd like to welcome Uriel Varela to give us an equity update.
Good afternoon, council members. Again, my name is Uriel Varela. I'm the Raisin Equity Manager here at the city of Kent. So today, I'm going to give you a community engagement update, and I'm joined by Alma Villegas, who is a consultant working with me on this strategic plan. So the project timeline, just based on the comments that I received last, the last time I provided an update, the community engagement and data collection phase was extended to the end of October, as well as the research and findings, data analysis was also extended to the end of October to do more engagement. So as I mentioned, today I'm joined by Alma Villegas of Alma Villegas Consulting. Alma has extensive experience here in South King County, and her along with Mercedes Cordova Hakim have been helping with both racial equity consulting as well as community engagement consulting. And the fact that they've been working in South King County for so long helps us with this process. And she's going to be providing some updates after the slides are done. So this results-based accountability is a process that we're using in the plan to make sure that we're accountable for the results that we're trying to have, right? So this process starts with the end, so the result. It works backwards to the means, how we're going to get there. And it's data-driven, and it's a way of being transparent in the way that we work through this strategic plan. So there's two types of accountability that we're looking at when it comes to this process. One is population or community level quality of life, and the other is results and indicators. So the population and community level quality of life, these indicators are the responsibility of multiple systems. So the city of Kent cannot do this alone. So this takes a little bit longer. And there's three types of performance measures. So that's how much did we do? How well did we do it? And is anyone better off because we did this? So an example is, we tend to get the question is, what do your employee demographics look like? Do they reflect the city of Kent? So for example, the result would be our employees' demographics will match our resident demographics. The indicators or internal data that we're looking at is number of BIPOC applicants for job applications that we have open, percentage of BIPOC applicants who have moved forward to an interview, the percentage of new hires who identify as BIPOC, as well as what are our retention rates of those populations. And the measurements, so how much did we do? What are the things that we changed in the HR application process? And did this work? And how well did we do it? And is anyone better off again? So we started this process in July with the Racial Equity Core Team, the core team that represents all the different departments. And we started with, what is your desired result for racial equity work? So this process started. The next few months are shared here. So in July, we started with the desired results and community indicators. August, our August meeting was canceled because we had that budget retreat that fell on the same day as this meeting, so we had to cancel that meeting. But in September, the data analysis will continue through October, like I mentioned, as well as the community engagement process. And this will lead us to create, as a team, the racial equity lens. And this is something I shared last time, and it'll make a little bit more sense based on the comments that are coming. So the racial equity lens will be used to, I guess, navigate the strategic plan as well as the racial equity toolkits. And the result will be providing common vocabulary and protocol for evaluating decisions, policies, processes, programs, and practices for racial equity. This also will hopefully lead us to measurements. So how can we measure the result? And I'm going to go back and I'm going to introduce Alma Villegas. Alma Villegas has been doing the engagement or helping with the engagement as well as Mercedes Hakim Cordova. And she's going to share a little bit of what she's hearing with the community and through our community engagement phase of the plan.
Hi, everyone. I'm Alma Villegas. And so thank you for having me. I just wanted to thank for the opportunity to tell you about what we've been hearing. So I think it's important to state that the consulting group is really, the consulting team is really just the conduit for information, the liaison in terms of what we're hearing. And so we've been conducting some outreach. We're, I will, to be honest, we're at the beginning stages of the outreach, and that is because there's been a lot of barriers to be able to really meet with people and frankly, get responses from people. I think contributing to that are things like, obviously, COVID and, you know, a lot of what's happening in, you know, the summer is really focused on that and helping the community. But the reality is that it's going, it's actually beyond that. There is a significant lack of trust with the city, in particular, in the way that in the past it has engaged BIPOC and particularly multicultural communities in this engagement efforts. And that's really generated some significant barriers to both Mercedes and I. And so I wanted to have an opportunity to share that. We have conducted some surveys in English and in Spanish and during a health fair that occurred about a couple of weeks ago, so we got some preliminary findings that way. We've also been trying to organize some listening sessions. We've held two. We have about three more that are coming, at least between now and September, and we're hoping to do more. But the reality is that in what we've learned through these surveys, through the preliminary listening sessions, and I also have conducted some interviews of community leaders and leader partners, community partners, basically what I'm hearing is they don't really want to work with the city. That's, I'm just being really honest here. There's fatigue, there's fear of retaliation, there is, you know, there is a feeling that the same questions are being asked over and over again to participated in multiple processes where community is being asked to provide input, and yet they're not seeing a lot of results from the city. And so I have multiple partners. I've been working in South King County since 2003. I've worked for a lot of different nonprofit organizations and more recently as a consultant in doing multicultural engagement work. And most of the people that spoke to me, they spoke to me because I have a relationship with them and because Mercedes has a relationship with them. And I had some folks that actually said to me, you know, if it had just been somebody else and it was the city making the request, I wouldn't have responded. And that has made us wonder whether the lack of response that we receive is also as a result of that for those partners that we don't have current relationships with. So it's been quite a challenging process. And what we have been hearing is that folks really want to see a demonstrated commitment from the city before they actually are ready to engage in some sort of co-design process. And I do a lot of racial equity consulting work as well, develop, work with, you know, strategic planning, do a lot of toolkits. And a toolkit is only as good as, you know, the genuine, how genuine the effort behind it is. And, you know, because they tend to be just check, check-the-box tools. And so I think that what we're hearing from the community is that we want to see bold commitments from the city about how they are planning to engage us in the future, what are the changes that they're going to be making internally. They want to see staff that's representative of themselves. They see the same faces that are very, you know, some individuals that work for the city that are very well-intentioned, but they don't feel that they really know how to relate with community. And they want, you know, city staff in particular to come and meet them where they are, talk to them, get to know their cultures, get to know their traditions, get to understand what they value when it comes to achieving racial equity and anti-racism, rather than them feeling like they have to keep coming to you. The only other thing that I will say here is that we've actually, as consultants, I've learned to have to course correct constantly in response to community. That's how we function. And so we've actually updated the scope of work. This is, I think we're on the third time in response to what we're hearing from community. And so the initial scope was really to go and talk to people, get input, and then have that be presented to the city for them to integrate into the plan. We've heard from some that they want to be involved in a co-design model with the city, but they're not ready to do that until they see something tangible in terms of a commitment from the city. The other thing is that there is also a lot of distrust and unhappiness as a result of, and COVID has kind of elevated this, the result of funding going primarily to organizations that are outside of the city of Kent, instead of actually supporting the grassroots organizations that leave and breed in Kent and are supporting the community here. And COVID, I did hear from multiple people that COVID sort of elevated that for them because they felt that the funding that they got was very, very token amounts as opposed to some of the funding went to some of the larger organizations in Seattle and outside of that. Mostly wider organizations could tend to then go to community-based organizations and try to tap into their networks and their relationships. And that's kind of like a slap in the face to them. And then I'll just close with saying, I do a lot of multicultural engagement, like I said. This issue of funding outside organizations is not unique to Kent. I see it in, you know, in other cities, I see it with other agencies, public agencies. And I think it's just really important to continue to elevate that because it is very, very common practice in assuming who we think should be, you know, is representing the community. And so I just wanted to highlight that. And so I think what we're proposing in the short term here is to continue our community engagement efforts for the next month or so, get those findings, and to facilitate a process with the core team and others with the city to bring the community voice into this plan so that we can really work together to find what are those commitments that are going to be really, really significant that then we can take to the community so that then they'll be open to work with the city collaboratively in a co-design process. That is our recommendation at this time. And I guess I'll just stop there. Thank you.
Questions?
Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you. A couple of questions. I was not clear on the plan going forward. So maybe can someone, can you reiterate what's the plan going forward?
The plan going forward is what we were doing already. So it'll be collecting the data that the community is sharing with us through listening sessions, surveys, and one-on-one interviews with community leaders in the city. We'll use that data and we'll bring it into the core team meetings to create a racial equity lens. The racial equity lens will then let us know what action items, what areas of focus we should be concentrating when it comes to the strategic plan. And then we will, I will write the strategic plan, and then we'll go back to the community and vet that plan and say, is there something that you think will make a change? And then after we hear those comments, coming back and then sharing the plan with council and leadership.
So how many organizations did you guys meet with?
So may I just add one thing? I know, that's for your question. What I will add... What I will add to what Uriel was saying is that this process isn't just 2021. This is an ongoing, needs to be an ongoing process where the community is engaged ideally on a quarterly basis or you have some sort of community accountability body that's going to keep the city honest in relation to the plan. So I just wanted to just, you know, stress that because I think sometimes we look at things and say, well, we're going to create a plan and it's going to be nice and it's going to sit on the shelf. But it really, this is about a long-term effort to really, really address, you know, disparities and inequities. And so I hope that there is going to be a commitment from the city to make sure that this is an ongoing effort beyond the 2021 process. In terms of who we talked to, we've spoken to several community-based organizations and like I said, several community members. I am very reluctant to share those names with you.
No, I don't want to name. You say server, you're talking two, three, one?
Oh, no. So we reached out, there is a shortlist of local community-based organizations that we reached out to. I believe it was about 15 of them. We only heard from about seven. Two of them said, no, I don't want to talk to you. The others that I spoke to are organizations that I have relationships with. And then we collected about almost 60 surveys at the health fair. And then we're doing listening sessions of small groups because the approach to these listening sessions isn't asking the same questions the community get our ass all the time. We're really trying to do a values-based approach so that we can hear from community, what are their values that are the most important for them individually as individual communities, but then collectively so that that can be the guiding principles and the foundation to inform the racial equity plan. And so because of that reason and because we're doing it in multiple languages, it really requires a significant amount of time to be able to really have a robust conversation. And so the groups that we're holding the listening sessions with are small, no more than 10 at a time. And right now we have four scheduled and then we're working on another one for the fall with youth.
So you reach out to 15, but we got a lot more than 15?
On top of 15, I've had one-on-one listening sessions with an additional 10. 10 executive directors, 10 community leaders for community organizations. So we're reaching out.
Okay, all right.
And we're targeting the local organizations. We're not going outside. And we're targeting BIPOC and multicultural organizations. Those are the furthest away from power.
Yeah. And we, we as a council, I mean, we asked for this and I think a lot of us were in the forefront of us having, you are doing this job. So we are serious about it. I think we all understand it's not a one and done type of thing either, right? So it's not going to get it all done in one year because it didn't happen in one year. And I think we all understand, at least I do, you know, when we look at the city diversity, you know, within employment, we have some work to do. I think there's a big opportunity for us to have our staff reflect the community, you know, that we live in. So trust is hard, right? You know, and no matter where you at, I mean, you have to, there's something that you gain over time. And I just hope, you know, you know, as the messenger and leading this here, I think we all on this diet is serious about, you know, making these changes. That's why we invest the money in the program to try to make sure that this happens. One last question for you. So you've been doing this for a while. So I'm assuming that this is not too much different than what you have done in the past, right? I'm guessing that, right?
Yeah, like I said, these issues aren't unique to Kent. I, you know, there's some cities that are further along than others. But I will say that I was a little bit surprised as to some of the pushback that I received. There's always pushback, but I just didn't really expect it to be this difficult because we started this in, I think in June is when we started. You know, we're on August now, it's three months. But typically, one of the things is that, you know, Mercedes and I are like sole proprietors consultants, BIPOC consultants, both of us. Our relationships are really important to us. And so when I talked to Uriel about, you know, the, after the initial scope, talking about a co-design model, and then I went and talked to more people, I came back and I said, you know what? I'm just not willing to jeopardize those relationships until we see something tangible that we can present to community so that they can see them and we can engage them. And so I'm very passionate about this work and I really want to see the success here. But I also am not willing to sacrifice some of the relationships that it took me a long time to build with token acts. And so I think it's just really important to be really, really conscious of that in general.
Yeah, I get it. And, you know, trust is important in the relationship that you built. You don't want to have a destroyer. I guess at the end of the day, as we continue to put this plan together and we'll have some checkpoints along the way. And I think what you're saying, you go back to the community and get some buy-off from them, right? And then once we get it together, then bring it back to us and be up to us to make sure that we have the check and balance in place as we implement this here. So I, as you continue to go out, I mean, I think we all really serious about this. So we understand the trust and hopefully, over time, we can work through some of those things. So I appreciate you really helping us as a consultant. And I feel pretty good about, we'll get there. It can take us some time, but we'll get there. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Lamar.
Thank you. Yeah, great presentation and I really appreciate your insights. Your insightful and important and all of that. I guess more, not secret, I'm going to say vocabulary or use me, but candid, just more, a more candid, probably not good by the way. And I think, you know, with that candor, I've got a couple of questions. And so perhaps, I'd be really curious, what percent of funding is going outside of the city? Is going to be, if I understand correctly, we're saying that we're giving funding to organizations outside the city that then funnel back to, around the valley to further, and that's what?
Instead of going directly to them, right? Did it, they're like?
Right, right. So I'd be really interested in part of this analysis to maybe understand how much, how often is the funding that way? And what percent of our service economy might be done that way? And then there was one about an accountability committee. Would that be part of the plan? I know that we have several, you know, diversity equity groups and committees that need. But is the idea to take the feedback from the community and maybe make this look a little better?
It can, yes. So we have a couple of groups that would be that. We have the Cultural Communities Board, which has been, I've been updating them on the process. And we also have the core team. The core team is more internal. The Cultural Communities Board is external. So those are two options. And the board has been really great when it comes to feedback.
So I was wondering if there needs to be some other layer of community?
I think it's important because we have heard this, that ensuring, like, who is on that committee and are they really representative? Yeah. So I think an additional layer, I think it's needed.
Kind of a follow-up on Councilmember Lamar's question. So are you talking about the Cultural Communities Board and what makes up that board?
Well, my question is, there was a comment about the community would like with your accountability committee to really hold us to doing things differently and actually not be, not tokenizing this effort, really making changes. So my question is, as part of this plan, will we be taking a look at what that accountability committee needs to look like? Maybe it's changes to existing or maybe it's something new?
So that would be separate from Cultural Communities Board?
So part of the plan and what I'm seeing as a feature is perhaps changing a little bit what the Cultural Communities Board does as a board and tie it more directly to the strategic plan and having them oversee some of the programs or the action items that come out of this plan.
And another question about the Cultural Communities Board, what kind of feedback did you get from them? Because that typically kind of represents, they all come together to have discussions about what's happening in the city, you know, what kind of things they're seeing and bringing what they have from, you know, their knowledge of, because it is such a diverse group. What are you hearing back from them as far as feedback?
So I haven't given them this update. So that meeting's happening at 6:30 tonight.
Okay.
And I'll be providing that information for them to hear.
Do they share the same, well, I guess you haven't shared this information with them, but do, do they have reluctance sometimes in coming to the city or talking about certain topics within that group? Or what are you feeling from that group in particular?
A lot of this we've been hearing for years. So, and those conversations have been happening with this Cultural Communities Board. So some of that information has already been shared with us over the years. And I think that is part of the reluctance that we're seeing when community members and leaders are saying, we've said this before. So it's been a difficult process, but we have to go through the process to make sure that we hear what the community has to say and record that and share that information. These are part of the uncomfortable conversations that we have to have as a city in order to move forward and become eventually an anti-racist, racist city.
And then just to add to that, so Mercedes actually was very deeply involved in the census work last year. And so she heard a lot of this then during that effort. I also recently, before this project, worked with another consulting team on the Mobile Park report and heard the same thing from the community on that. We had, I had a couple of community ambassadors that went out and talked to different people. And so a lot of that was mirror in that as well. So we're pulling from different sources.
Councilmember, Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you. Thank you. That was very detailed and I enjoyed getting that information from you, hearing that. So the organizations that are outside of Kent, does that include ones that may also have a branch inside Kent? Or they have no presence here at all?
I think without getting into specifics, I mean, I think that that question, I think it's going to be different depending on the organization. What I will say is that the organizations that I'm aware of, the people are referring to are organizations that I've also heard from in other projects with other efforts. And those, they don't have a presence. They might have maybe a program that they bring here, right? But they don't really have a physical presence in here. And so what happens is then they go to the organizations that are here. And then those organizations is like, why aren't they just funding us? You know, so there are large organizations that are very good organizations. I don't want to, you know, criticize these large organizations for their work. They're important BIPOC organizations. But the reality is that just because you're a BIPOC organization doesn't necessarily mean that you represent the people in that community. And I think that that's something that, I think there needs to be more accountability around that, around how do they report out to ensure that what they're producing in terms of the, you know, the people that, you know, the people that they're serving and their grant applications and things like that is really, really representative of the people that are really in the city. And we just see that all the time, so.
Okay, thank you. And then Uriel, as far as the, on the employment part, where are we as far as, I remember there was a hardware problem or the application, I see our IT folks here. Where are we as far as being able to go with blind applications?
So the last update that I had, it has to do with Workday. Since we switched to Workday, that system is not able to remove the names or identify all information from applications. And that's a key part of the blind recruitment and blind application process. So I know that there's going to be conversations with Workday, Microsoft, and I've heard that that is one of the things that they're looking to implement. Hopefully, I'm not sure when, what the timeline looks like, but that's one of the issues that we have when it comes to fully implementing a blind recruitment process.
And those conversations, any idea when those conversations are taking place?
That would be an HR conversation, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember voice.
Yeah, I just want to follow one comment. I totally agree with you for us having to report out. I mean, I think there's something where you're here or outside of Kent and you're getting the fund. I think it would be nice to see the report. I don't think I, we haven't seen any from anywhere. So I think that's something we probably need to talk about going forward. And I think it's, to me, it's probably easy to follow the money too, right? So if we giving that money out, we should be able to follow it where it's going and then be able to see, I mean, if they are really spending that money on the people in Kent. So that may be something we may want to look into because if we sending it out, we should be able to track it. And, you know, I don't know, necessarily you don't have to live here, but if you benefit people in Kent. And so personally, I really care about, right? I mean, if you're the fund, come here and you helping people in the Kent, then I'm okay. But we would, I think we can do some tracking and see, you know, where's something going and making sure it is utilized in the city. So thanks for sharing.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you so much. Moving on, we have the contract with Chet's Roofing and Construction to replace the roof of the Kent Police Station. And this does require council action.
Good evening, council president and members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here. My name's Nate Harper. I'm the Capital Projects Manager for the Facilities Division in the Parks Department. And I'm here to talk, like council president said, about the police headquarters re-roofing project. The Facilities Division is asking for the committee to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Chet's Roofing and Construction Incorporated to replace the roof of the Kent Police Station in an amount not to exceed $189,922.50, subject, of course, to the final terms and conditions acceptable to the Parks Director and the city attorney. At this time, I'd like to offer a brief history of the facility as well as any, a few additional aspects of the projects which are included in this agreement. The facility was last re-roofed back in 2001 and has reached the end of its useful life. Also, the lapped siding on the east and west upper sections of the building has also reached its end of life and is included in this project's agreement to be replaced. In addition to this work, the contractor will also be required to remove approximately 700 lineal feet of sealant that is found to contain, sorry, and invest this material. This work is also included in the agreement and will be completed by a licensed abatement subcontractor. If approved, this project will be paid for the Capital Projects Roof Lifecycle Replacement Budget.
Any questions or comments? Hey, everyone in agreement? I see a thumbs up from Councilmember Thomas. Everyone okay moving this forward to consent? Wonderful, thank you for joining us. All right, I'd like to welcome our Parks Director Julie Perescondola to talk about our lease with Half Lion Public House at the Riverbend Gulf Complex.
Awesome, thank you, council president and council members. Can you hear me?
Yes.
How can I hear with a mask yet? Thank you. You know, it's actually perfect timing. We didn't coordinate with Bill, but, you know, take a look at some of these headlines right now because, you know, Bill and his colleagues talked about the hit to businesses. Restaurants were one of the most catastrophic hits simply because of the profit margins being so narrow and the ability to really grow capital reserves or, you know, budgets for them to cover them through these types of crises. So you've seen these kind of headlines across the nation. Happy to finally be here because we've honestly been talking about this for literally a year. So what I decided to do to demonstrate a little bit, I'm going to share a little bit of justification on what our thought process was on this amendment, then share a little bit more about the actual details and then have questions. Also with me today, I do have David Westby and Jason Nelson way back. In case there's any questions on their side as well, the two owners. So as you can see, the state of Washington, this is the COVID timeline and restrictions for restaurants that I have mapped for you. As you can see, we've changed models three different times. And we've been starting and stopping, starting and stopping. We had six months of zero capacity allowed, seven months of 25% capacity allowed, and three months at 50%. That's not the worst of it because, you know, we've talked a lot about just the challenges. I put some information here just so you understood and we're going to talk about it a little bit later in the presentation. This isn't even just about capacity. They also limited hours, they limited tables, they limited families, you know, and how many people you could have. So there's a lot of other restrictions that were on top of already percentage capacities. So just a reminder for council, the current lease that we had, you know, is a 10-year term. It's a simple lease, straight kind of landlord-tenant relationship. As you recall, we did switch from a gross profit model. That is not the model that Kent has. Utility consumption is responsibility of Half Lion. They're responsible for all their taxes leases. We do have security deposit on file. We do CPI growth. And then we have built-in extensions to really look at markets which would potentially drive lease payment up at that time. So that's the current plan, which of course is still the plan if, you know, we were open. So this just gives you a list. You know, I was working through this, trying to, you know, think this through. I worked with Half Lion, I worked with Bill Ellis. I'm trying to figure out, like, these are all the issues that restaurants unfortunately had to deal with during COVID. So simply linking like a lease reduction to say, well, let's cut it 50% because it was only 50% capacity, that's really a flawed logic because of all the other issues that we have here. Same thing with even limiting alcohol consumption and events. Nobody could do actual menus. You had to switch to QR codes, you had to package your food. And then one of the biggest challenges that restaurants have faced, And then one of the biggest challenges that restaurants have faced, specifically at Half Lion, who I'm really representing here today, is the ability to maintain and sustain your workforce. You know, when you're shut down, servers find new jobs, they have things to do, right? So you lose your workforce. And so then, you know, the state would allow some capacity, then you'd have to rehire, and then you had to, again, let everybody go. So it's just been this terrible roller coaster for not just Half Lion, I imagine all restaurants here in Kent. So this just gives you a list of what restaurants have had to deal with this last, and hopefully not again, knock on wood. So how we really looked at it first is when this first hit us, which was, you know, way back in March of 2020, our first response was really to recover and respond, and oh my gosh, and we had to close everything, and we kind of held for a minute. We then originally made the false assumption, well, this isn't going to last too long, we're going to figure this out, let's just hold this because we don't want to have to keep coming back to council. So we would start on a strategy that we thought was effective, and then the rules changed. So then we waited, and this literally has kept on for the entire year. And that's what some of the challenge was, which is why we chose to hold. We definitely did a ton of research across not only the nation, but the, or not only the state, but the nation to figure out. I reached out to so many different colleagues to try and figure out what they were doing with their restaurants. There's very little guidance yet on some of this stuff. I do know that Auburn's Public Municipal Course, they did modify the entire restaurant agreement, so there are some that are starting to move forward now. We really worked on our side, trying to think through things because, you know, we worked with our finance department, we worked with our legal departments. Then the other thing that we did is since the restaurant has been on site now for, you know, a little over a year, we're at the point too where we have nuances. Now we've got to fix the lease, some new opportunities coming up. So we took the opportunity to look not just at financial impacts, but also operating and what did we want to modify there. And then I just want to make really clear, you know, Half Lion worked with us from day one, and they've been in communication and contact with us this entire time, and we've been working together throughout the whole process. Couple additional things just to consider, when we looked at the whole kind of experience out there, you know, golf was one of the first things to come back, thank goodness, because it's been a great year for us, both last year and this year, when you're looking at regular golf rounds. We've proven it multiple times, a restaurant is very critical to the success, actually the bar more so than the restaurant, to golf and the experience out there. So it is in our long-term need for that facility. The other thing to consider is with restaurant revenue loss, it didn't just happen gradually, it was a catastrophic drop, and it just stopped. There was no opportunity to recover, and it was like this, up and down. And so there really wasn't an ability to react and respond. The other thing to keep in mind too that we did is Half Lion is a new restaurant. They're still building their brand, it's getting stronger and stronger, which of course gives us great opportunity and awareness. But you've got an organization that just now has been there 10 months, and they just rebuilt the whole interior, so definitely used a lot of their reserves and capital to make that happen, only to be, you know, restricted in their opportunity, which is really unfortunate. Like I already mentioned, they had 14 months straight of not allowing 25, more than 25% capacity. We also looked at the current market. If we didn't work with Half Lion on any kind of lease space adjustments, what's our opportunity out there? And obviously, there is no market for restaurants, especially during COVID. I mean, nobody would just be like, hey, I'm going to buy this place and build a restaurant there. So we definitely really looked at, you know, what were some of those opportunities? Half Lion did apply for some of the programs that were available out there. They were not, it definitely didn't put them over for having so much restriction on their business. We have reviewed their financials and they did experience a loss. We also, just so the council understands, the counter side, if we don't do an amendment, you know, for us, as you can see, we're still dealing with COVID in 2021. One could argue they still don't have full capacity, even so, because people are still cautious in stepping back and staying home and, you know, ordering online and so on. So, you know, worst case, by the time I could actually go out for formal RFP and actually get a whole thing, then they'd have to restaurant remodel. I mean, we're talking almost three years before we could have a new opportunity at Riverbend, which would be detrimental to the business. And then in the end, you know, it's something that we like to look, it's the right thing to do, obviously, and we worked through what we could legally do, and they're a great partner for us in that regard. The other thing I just want council to remember too is golf is an enterprise fund, this is not impacting general fund or the tax seller. This is all about the business model that we have out at Riverbend. So going to just what the amendment, you have it in front of you also in the packet, but just on, just a nutshell high level, is that we are looking at waiving 100% of the lease through the pandemic restrictions. The lease would be, you would be approving it retroactively from March 2020 forward. We already did absorb and receive the loss to the 2020 budget, that's 30,000. We still have a loss that we're looking at in the 2021, which is the current budget of 24,000. What I can say is golf is really hopping right now. We've broken records constantly, the driving range is now open, we were just out there today, every single stall was packed. The business can handle this. Obviously, I would, you know, want the revenue, but the business can handle this impact. We're also working with the finance department to try and build a case for support on golf fund restitution with some of the ARPA funding, so we are going to look and see if we can also potentially consider that. The other thing, Half Lion is still on the responsible party to at least hold tax on the original amount, so that's something they will still do, we did not waive that. We are holding CPI inflation. I think we all heard how high inflation is right now, not necessarily for consumers in the restaurant business. So we're letting people kind of rebuild, get discretionary income back up to go out to eat and all that kind of stuff, then we'll reapply the CPI. And then utilities, because of the utility moratorium, we were able to defer utility payments. Half Lion is still paying that back, and they're going to be paying that back on a five-year term with 8% interest, so we're not just gifting that money, we are adding interest on top of it. And then, of course, everything's back to normal now, and they're starting to make, you know, their normal payments now. Couple of other changes, we are adding some space, 85 square feet onto the driving range side, so now the driving range side is going to have drinks and light food on that side. We're just doing some cleanup, parking out there is a premium, so we designated some parking spots for Half Lion. And then, of course, as we continue to evolve and grow together, we wanted a little bit more discretion to do non-financial types of lease amendments, just with the mayor and myself and with Half Lion as they come up. So that is kind of the gist, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have for it.
Julie, thank you so much for this. I just want to express that in Councilmember Misho's absence, she completely supports these efforts and is grateful to have Half Lion calling Kent home. I also agree with you, this is absolutely the right thing to do. And I think something to remind people is that Half Lion came into Kent and completely began this relationship and partnership with us. You know, they helped us through certain fundraisers at the city, Kent-on-Town Partnership, some of our service clubs, providing services and space to make sure that everyone was successful in their endeavors, you know, for fundraising and different opportunities. And I know that moving forward, and when we come out of this on the other side, that that partnership and relationship will continue and actually get even better. So thank you so much for joining us. And I know I'm a frequent visitor, Councilmember Fincher is a frequent visitor, so great to be able to support you as we get through this. Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Julie. I mean, I think COVID had impacted all of us, right? You know, and we have been through several restaurants, right? And many of those walked away, probably still owing the city, right? So I personally would not want to go through that again. I think Half Lion had demonstrated that they are a viable business, and I think prior to COVID, they was doing extremely well. So for me, it's all about doing the right thing, right? You know, and I just think to get them through what we all kind of going through with this COVID stuff and get them sustained, in the long run, it'll be good for us, it'll be good for the city, and it will be good for Half Lion. So this is something that I strongly support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Larmour.
Yeah, so I want to echo that, I strongly support this as well. I think it makes sense from the perspective of this is exactly what we're asking landlords to do with our other businesses, and residential landlords are asking them to work with the tenants. And so for us to do anything but work with these tenants, I think would be irresponsible. So I think this is the right thing to do, and they've been great partners. And I remember all those years that there was no restaurant down there. And so I think it's really vital and important to our community to do this, so thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments? All right, so is everyone okay moving this motion to the consent?
Awesome.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie. All right, next we have the supplemental parks property levy agreement, and Terry Youngman.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening, councilmembers. Terry Youngman, Park Planning and Development with the Kent Parks Department. So tonight, I'll be presenting an item which would authorize the mayor to sign a supplemental property tax levy agreement with King County and receive funds in the amount of $1.44 million. These funds would be used to improve the Green River Trail. So going back to 2019, August 6 of 2019, King County voters approved Proposition Number One for parks levy. This was a six-year property tax levy, so 2020 to 2025, specifically for the purposes of parks. Within that was an allocation for the Green River Trail. So this agreement would allow the county to reimburse the city of Kent for $1.44 million in contribution towards design and construction for a missing link, the Green River Trail, which is located at the junction of the Union Pacific Railroad and the Interurban and Green River Trail at Foster Park. So this is a project that we have been working on for the past year. It's actually one we are working in coordination with our Public Works Department with the Milwaukee Two Levy Project, so it would be a combined project. There's some efficiency that's being gained by combining those two scopes into a single project. And so this is grant funding that we would be receiving from the county to support that effort. So that's really the extent of what I'm here to propose today, and happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, moving it forward to consent. All right, great, thank you. Next up, we have Sarah Wood to talk about the inter-agency agreement with Washington State Traffic Safety Commission for 2122 walker-roller safety program up on Pacific Highway South. That's a lot.
Yes, thank you, council, very much for having me here this evening. I'm excited to present this grant project to you all for a walker-roller safety project that we were successful in obtaining from the Washington Traffic Safety Commission. My name is Sarah Wood, I am the Community Education Coordinator for the Kent Police Department. One of the hats that I wear is the Target Zero Manager for South King County. There's actually two of us that coordinate traffic safety under the Target Zero umbrella that were half-funded by the Washington Traffic Safety Commission to do multi-jurisdictional traffic safety projects. And this is one of those grant projects that we are successful in receiving. The Traffic Safety Commission came to a lot of us earlier this year in March with a walker-roller grant to provide funds for, to enhance traffic safety for our bikes and our walkers. And we started looking at our data of roadways within King County, and one of the data points that stuck out to us was Pacific Highway South. And looking at it from basically Federal Way, South Federal Way all the way north to Teculah and Burien, from 2017 through 2020, we saw about 40 serious injury and fatality collisions involving pedestrians and bicyclists along the entire Pacific Highway South roadway within South King County. So we were successful in applying for a grant, almost $118,000, which will provide outreach and education and transcreation of materials for our walkers and rollers throughout our multi-jurisdictional agencies along Pack Highway. We're also looking at doing some enforcement and some observational surveys to help us really understand the behaviors that the walkers and rollers and drivers are taking on when they're out there on that roadway, to hope to impact and reduce those serious injuries and fatalities. It's a one-year project, we start October 1st, and we run through September 30th, 2022. And based upon our work, we hope that it's an ongoing project that will be continuing and kind of shifting as we need to with the different priority areas and focus. So that's what I'm here for tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you, yeah. So a question, you mentioned, was educational materials was the first part. Does that include like, what does that look like? I'm trying to understand the educational material for somebody on a bike, or is it signage?
It could be a lot of things. We're going to start developing that, working with our different communities from, again, Federal Way to Burien and Teculah. My co-part, Target Zero Manager for North King County is housed in Public Health, King County, Seattle, and will be using their in-house transcreation methods and things like that to help us develop handout materials. We're talking about doing maybe potentially bike rodeos within our cities to hand out to our young kids and those that are there, social media campaigns. We have about $30,000 set aside for the outreach and education piece in this grant project, so we are anticipating very different and hopefully well-reached, well-promoted types of things.
Okay, thank you. Great, any other questions or comments? I think it sounds like a great project. Will you report back to us next year as far as what you found and what we've learned from this? Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, thank you, Sarah, for this information. Question is about the 117, it's all jurisdiction, not just Kent, right?
Yes. Correct. We are the, the Kent PD is a fiscal agent for the funds. So we will help disperse the funds to our observational survey contractor and the different police departments participating in the enforcement and that type of stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah. Great question.
Councilmember Larmour, did you have anything additional?
I'm sorry.
All right. I don't see any other hands raised. Is everyone okay moving this forward to consent? All right, wonderful, thank you, good luck.
Thank you so much for your time.
And then next, we have the Downey Side Channel Restoration, also a grant that requires action. Welcome, Melissa.
Thank you, Council President, councilmembers. Good evening, I think at this point. I'm always happy to talk to you guys about the Downey project, and so I am bringing forward something for your authorization, but I also wanted to use this as an opportunity to provide you guys with an update. Just wanted to quickly point out the picture that we have on the screen right now. This is actually a picture that was taken by the Multimedia Department during construction of Phase Four. It was just a few weeks ago, so it's a very recent picture. Moving on, we did just complete Phase Four just a couple of weeks ago. That phase included the excavation of 17,000 cubic yards of material, places us pretty close to 150,000 cubic yards of material out of the site. Still got a ways to go, about 60,000 more to go, including the big connection to the side channel, or to the river, excuse me. These pictures that you see here are during construction, again, taken by our Multimedia Department, they have great drone footage. So the picture on the left is actually looking southward, you can see Matt Rainier in the background. That is them doing some of the excavation of the site. And then the image on the right-hand side is looking northward, providing the same, the same kind of construction. And then moving on to what I'm, I'm actually kind of here to talk to you guys about, we're in a really good position right now for the Downey project in that we've either received or been earmarked for all the funding that we need to complete the project. So it's a very exciting time right now. So the work that we're currently going through is actually providing approval for resolutions to work with the grant agencies for getting those grant agreements in place. And then the good news is that we are currently working with them for these grant agreements and are expecting to have them to you in a couple of months, so I should see you guys fairly soon. And just as a kind of reminder of where we're at right now, this is another overview of the site and its current condition. This is after our contractor had left the site and kind of buttoned it up. That yellow circle that you see there is actually that excavation area that you saw in the previous pictures. So in the scheme of things, it's a large project, even moving 17,000, it's a fairly small footprint when you think of the overall project. And that's a good example of where the river is and where the river will be in the context of the project. So that's this flow area right through here in the direction of flow. And this is an image from westward looking, or excuse me, northward looking southward. And then with the grant dollars that we are going to be receiving that we're currently working towards getting the agreements in place for, this is a reminder of what the future site conditions will look like. So next year's construction is expected to complete the remainder of the excavation, the installation of the habitat structures, which are these little brown spots down here at the bottom. And then all the planting will take place afterwards. So we will be bringing more of that information to you guys in the near future, and then that work will happen next summer. But to begin with, we need approval from you guys for our grant resolution.
All right, any questions or comments? Of course, another great project that is benefiting from multiple agencies and grant money from other, you know, areas that is going to prove to be something that I think lots of cities around will be talking about for quite some time, so. Everyone okay moving this forward to consent? All right, great, thank you. Next, we have an amendment to consulting service agreement for IT temporary staff.
Good evening, councilmembers. Good to be with you, it's been a while. We've got a number of items on the agenda. The first couple The first couple, I'm going to go ahead and let Brian Rambunga, our PMO, Project Management Office Coordinator, walk us through, and then I'll come back up. I'll go through a couple of items, and we've got a number of staff from IT here that can answer questions for you this evening also. So I'll hand the floor over to Brian.
Thank you, Mike. Madam President, council members, good evening. Like Mike said, Brian Rambunga, the IT PMO Supervisor in your Information Technology Department. IT is requesting for authorization to execute Amendment Number Two with recruitment agencies Robert Half International, Protingent Incorporated, and Viree Technology LLC. These amendments seek to increase the available contract funding for all IT temporary services contract by an additional about 1.2 million dollars through December 31st, 2021. It's important to note that if authorized, funding for these contract amendments will be paid from IT and collaborating departments existing 2021, 2022 biennial approved capital and operating budgets. Over the course of this year, we've partnered with other city departments to assist with hiring augmented professionals as IT's established relationship and processes. With these agencies created efficiencies for contractor onboarding. IT is also constantly evaluating department resource allocations to ensure adequate coverage for and from capital and operations perspective. So with that, IT will monitor fees charged in relation to this collective amount to ensure the amounts paid under all temporary consulting contracts do not exceed the adjusted budget. That concludes my presentation for this initial item. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, everyone okay moving this portion forward? Okay, great.
Sounds good. So for the next item, IT is requesting for authorization to execute a new consultant services agreement with the Agency Tech Systems Incorporated. In Q4 of 2019, council approved the consultant service agreements for three other recruitment agencies, which I had just discussed in the previous item, where the city leverages for bringing on contractors, again, to augment staff for capital project and operations-type work. These recruitment agencies specialize in placing IT professionals in project and contract to higher positions. So like the other agencies in our bucket, the city will pay tech systems based on time and materials for temporary services provided under this agreement from an approved collective budget through December 31st, 2021. Again, IT will monitor fees charged in relation to this collective to ensure the amounts paid under all temporary consulting contracts do not exceed this previously approved budgeted amount. And that concludes my presentation on this item and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you. I appreciate what you're sharing with us. I know consulting fee a lot higher than probably this time because the big demand for them. What is your, any different than the previous? Contract for consulting? Have you noticed the cost of consulting going up?
We have, actually, yeah. I mean, probably like many people know that, you know, the employee market is very, very competitive, and it is getting increasingly difficult to hire, to find and hire tech professionals, at least within our field. So it is, we have noticed a slight kind of competitive edge on the consulting agency side to look to increasing rates. For our 2021 amendments, that rate has stayed the same. But as we look to discuss what the, either the amendments look for 2022 and so on, we could be looking at an increased rate from these agencies.
But must, must be, are we locked in, or could something else come about as time goes on with this year? And do we, would that be part of the costs, or we'd be coming back and looking for more?
For 2021, we are locked in.
Locked in, okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, is everyone okay moving this to consent? All right, thank you very much, Brian. And then welcome back to Mike.
Thank you. Let me take one quick, brief moment to also call out that as a part of especially the Amanda project, we've got Kurt Hansen, ECD Director, with us, who's the customer executive sponsor on the project. Also have Simeon Roden, who's the IT Project Manager and Lead PM on the project. And then Greg Scants is the IT Development Manager, an IT management sponsor on the Amanda project. So they can also answer any specific questions that you might have. For your consideration on this space, we have two items that includes supporting material that was provided as a part of your council packet. I should note that both these items are associated with Kiva replacement, or now more commonly known as the Amanda Implementation Project. The first item is a bit of housekeeping for the project and is submitted as an authorization for the mayor to sign amendments to the Master License and Service Agreement, originally established with CSDC Incorporated. Since our original engagement in 2019 with CSDC, they've rebranded or changed their corporation name to Caliterra USA Incorporated, and then subsequently was acquired by Granicus LLC. And so ultimately, these actions require us to formally assign the existing contract to Granicus in the first motion before you reflect that. It's also important to note that since we originally engaged with CSDC, again, known as Granicus, they pivoted their implementation approach and model from one where they had their professional services group perform implementations to instead having one where they have subcontractors that perform the actual implementation aspects of procuring and securing their products and platforms. So there's been quite a bit of change that's been associated with this project in particular. And the team is to be commended for the work that they've been doing, the patience that they've exercised as a result of that. No, by the way, there was a pandemic that was thrown into the mix while we were going through the implementation. So our implementation partner is V33 or Vision 33, and you'll see reference to that in the material. So having said all of that, the assignment and assumption of the original agreement is our first item on the Amanda front, and I'm happy to answer any questions on that particular topic for you.
Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Mike. Does that change the timeline of the project?
It does, and I'm actually going to reference that for the next item.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That sounds okay.
All right, so we have this before us. Any questions on this before we move it on to the consent calendars? Everyone okay?
So, Madam President, so Mike, just to make sure, so so the, this is a Kiva replacement, right, Amanda, right? And the part that Kurt used for his permit, what's, what do you call it?
The permitting system?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the Kiva replacement project is now the Amanda Implementation Project, which addresses permitting and compliance.
And that first implementation of Amanda, would that include the permit process?
It will.
Okay, and is there a timeline on that too?
Great questions. Yep, and I'm coming to those. Great minds think alike.
A tricep, but I still can get the answer out of it. We'll have to wait. Okay, sorry, fair enough.
This is for the Master License and Service Agreement, then we'll move on to the other piece. So is everyone okay moving this forward, then we'll get on to the rest of our questions? All right, wonderful, thank you. We'll move that to consent, and then we will move on to our last items.
Awesome, thank you. So the second item for your consideration is the move to authorize establishing a new budget for the Amanda project at a total cost of $2,226,483. The original budget was established and authorized by council back in 2019 at $1,679,120. To date, 17 change orders have been processed through change orders that equate to approximately $48,000 in total. And those have been processed as a standard part of the implementation project. Tonight, we're requesting that council authorize Change Order Number 18 at a cost of $345,675. As the situation over the last year or more would have it, as I mentioned, the project has been significantly impacted by COVID-19. And that includes exceptionally high turnover, staff turnover with, within the ranks of the Vision 33 Implementation Partner in particular. Couple that with the data conversion challenges associated with the complexity of more than 20 years' worth of data in the legacy Kiva system. And the result is the need to revise the project implementation strategy, as well as the resulting work plan and budget. We've also included a project contingency request for $201,688. That's approximately 10% of the overall project cost and accounts for the potential for cost overruns during the remainder of the implementation effort. The total cost increase to the project is $547,363. Brings the total cost of the project to what I had previously mentioned is approximately 2.2 million. Finally, I would be remiss if I did not mention that the implementation timeline, due in large part to requirements made by Granicus and Vision 33, have us bumping it out to the, by the end of Q3 of this year. We also have a project stabilization effort identified on the heels of that to help deal with a number of the bugs that we know will be found, but won't be critical and therefore will be punted to post-implementation. We'll also be looking to tackle quite a bit of the additional functionality that Kurt and the ECD folks have required as a part of being able to ensure that their workflows and business processes are going to be as efficient and effective as possible. And so with that, the team and I are more than happy to answer additional questions that you might have.
And you have that timeline in your packet too, so thank you very much. Councilmember Boyce, followed by Councilmember Almer.
Earlier, when you first came to us, I mean, we did talk about change order, and we kind of know how those things happen. I know you can't predict the future, but I mean, more change order? I mean, do you feel like we have enough in this year to kind of take us over the hump?
No, great question. I appreciate you asking that, actually. The contingency that we've earmarked is in part our effort to try and forecast some of the work that we've envisioned as a part of the collaboration that's been going on with the ECD folks. I had mentioned also that we've got the stabilization project, which as council knows, we typically look to follow large, complex, high-profile projects with a stabilization project as the dust settles and we address things that we didn't know about when we first budgeted and estimated for the project, but that comes up as a part of especially planning and implementation, configuration, development, et cetera. We're currently in the UAT phase of the project, user acceptance testing, which for me is personally my favorite phase of the project because there's a lot that you learned during that.
Oh, yeah.
Where you oftentimes see great progress eventually being made. Folks can kind of see the light at the end of the tunnel and don't see it as an oncoming train anymore. They see it as the end of the tunnel. So based on what we know today, we feel comfortable with this being what we can and should ask for, knowing that we've got the stabilization project to be able to fall back on a bit if there are especially large, unexpected nuances that arise as part of going live with the project by end of Q3.
So my, this timeline, it's a Amanda implementation for new application only. So what do you mean by that?
Yeah, actually, I think what I might have is Simeon, our project manager, maybe speak to that because he's got the most up-to-date information, especially as it pertains to the work we've been doing directly with the vendor.
All right.
Did you catch that question? Yeah. Could, Councilmember Boyce, will you mind repeating?
Yeah, I'm looking at the, your schedule here.
Yes.
And it says, Option One, Amanda implementation for new application only. So what does that mean?
I'm sorry, yes. Well, sure, Kurt, you want to come up?
Well, go ahead.
Okay.
Wait, wait, wait. Kurt likes to steal the podium.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know.
This is for IT, Kurt, okay? Go ahead.
Well, we have some applications that, in the stabilization project, that we would like to, that we put on pause for the go-live for Q3, that we'll be focusing on in the stabilization. And so the new applications only for this Q3 go-live actually deals with some of those things that we put together for the, for the functional requirements of ECD to be able to intake some of those permits that are coming in that focused on the whole software going live for Q3. So only those new applications for this particular time will be focused on for the Q3 go-live. And then all of those remaining, we will come back and focus on for stabilization.
And roughly, what are some of the remaining ones that you know off the top of your head? I know we got Kurt's stuff, with the 010, 20, 10, 8. What's some of the other ones that we know roughly?
Kurt, you want to come?
Yeah, boy, I think on that one, I honestly don't know the answer.
Okay, that's okay.
So I should go back to the back of the room.
It's all good.
I mean, the big change for us, Councilmember Boyce, is really just looking at that go-live date. We obviously are trying to accelerate. The sooner the better for implementing Amanda. That's been our goal. I'm going to back up for just a moment here. And Simeon, Greg, Mike's team has been wonderful on the city side through IT. I think right now it's challenging in ECD just because, I mean, we've shared with you at council retreats and any other opportunity you'll give me to talk about just the challenges with Kiva. But Amanda is kind of, I've learned to not be too optimistic with what it's going to deliver just over the last year, right? But we're really looking forward to this new platform. Our customers deserve it. There will be efficiencies to gain. We will, we will see those after stabilization. So the go-live date for us of October 1, third quarter, end of third quarter, rather, that's important, but what we're going to do to make that transition possible is really look at new customers. So somebody coming in and submitting new applications, that will be entered through the Amanda, the new, new system. In order to effectuate that, that kind of demarcation line and get us to go, we have to keep Kiva running in the background. So our existing applications, things like that, that are reviewing today, we're keeping them in Kiva. And they're going to kind of mature out through that system. We just don't have the bandwidth, whether it's IT or my staff frankly, to, to pull all of the Kiva stuff into Amanda on that, on that go-live date. So, you know, it's good and bad. We get to go live for new applications, but we have to keep Kiva kind of going in the background.
And I get that, and I'm okay with that. So I guess my question is, so you got dual system, new here and the old stuff. Eventually, I'm assuming the Kiva stuff will fade away. Do you know roughly? So if I put a permit in, how long does it stay live? If I do one today in Kiva, how long be before it mature out?
Councilmembers, some of the things that are in Kiva are land use actions, and land use actions can go very quickly, right? They can also, they can gather some, some dust, you know? There's a lot of stuff that we don't control on timelines. So we have applications that are still active that were submitted years ago. So I will say, with the IT out of arm's length, our goal will to be bringing in applications after stabilization, after we're confident in the product and everything is singing, we're going to go back into Kiva and start trying to pull things forward. That is our goal. Councilmember, can't give you a timeline.
No, that's good. No, I'm glad to hear, I mean, eventually you'll pull stuff over, right? Because, I mean, you can't afford to manage two systems forever, right?
There's a lot of communication that's got to happen too. We're working with master builders and all the, kind of our frequent flyers, if you will, letting them know about this very thing.
And I like the new system, like serving to what Bellevue have, right?
That's all accurate, yeah. I'm done, I'm done saying it's going to solve all the world's problems.
I got it, so no.
Wait and see.
Thank you. Look forward to it.
Councilmember Almer.
Yeah, so Mike, you and I, you talked about the timeline, and my understanding from you is that a lot of this change order is, you know, has to do with the work involved in the business, called the dirty data, you know? Fields in one system are not mapping clearly, to fields in other systems, and trading all kinds of problems. So I'm very familiar with what that happens in technology, and it's, it's to me, like, I remember when we scoped this project initially, it didn't, I questioned if we, if it was too low to begin with because of these type of things that come up when you're dealing with really old systems. So I think that, you know, this cost overrun doesn't really surprise me, and it actually, I think, puts it sort of in what I probably I think, puts it sort of in what I probably would have expected this to be in the first place. So, it seems like a lot of money on paper, but it really, for this type of work with a system that old and that many files and that much data mapping, that can go wrong. I'm, I'm really not, this feels very reasonable to me, actually. So, I wanted to share that. And then I'm wondering, too, is that, you know, I'm assuming that that's part of the problem with having, to not being able to pull over the Kiva stuff right away is because some of that mapping and data, data issues on the backend. We want to keep the, the new installations clean, if you will.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Same, yeah.
Yeah, very much to your point. Near the top of our minds is the effort to try and ensure that quality is baked into the process from start to finish. So, making sure that we don't end up with a garbage-in, garbage-out data scenario is, is first and foremost on the entire team's mind. It kind of drives a lot of the work that goes on day by day.
Great, thank you. Great. Any other questions or comments? All right, and I know we, some of us have talked to Mike about this, so I'm okay moving this forward as well. Is everyone okay moving this forward to consent? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda. I just want to thank everyone for joining us today. And just a reminder, this is our last committee of the whole meeting. We will move to individual committees starting in September. So again, that information will be on the city website, along with who's on those committees and the agendas leading up to those meetings. So, thank you, everyone. Have a great night. We are adjourned.